Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. We did two town hall meetings last year for the community, and they were both very successful. I did a separate one for Carroll County Public Schools staff, and that was great as well. I'm glad to see folks turn out for this one. And my hope tonight is that you learn a little bit more about the blueprint for Maryland's future and where we are in that implementation, as well as get any of your questions answered that you might have. And then further, be able to take the information that you gained tonight and please talk with your neighbors, your PTAs, whoever you can talk to, so that people really understand where we are and how this is going to impact all the students in CCPS. So let's start with, where are we now, a year into implementation? So for those of you who were with us last year, you probably remember that there was a lot of panic about the fiscal mandates of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. And for those of you who are not sure what that is, the Blueprint for Maryland's Future is and was legislation that went through the General Assembly down in Annapolis. And the legislation was meant to improve the field of education, both for teachers and for students. So it is meant to improve student achievement, student learning, and it's also meant to help to attract more people into the field of education. Because if you haven't noticed, fewer and fewer people are going into teaching. And there are fewer folks around for the workforce anyway. You know, for those of you who own businesses or are employed by a business, you've probably heard your business talking about the fact that it's really difficult to find workers, and we're in the same position. And we need teachers. And so part of the blueprint, part of the blueprint's purpose is to improve the field so that more people will want to go into teaching. So as time progresses, we're getting a better understanding of the details surrounding Blueprint, and we're having many conversations with folks down in the General Assembly, our own delegates and commissioners and Board of Ed members. We're all talking to each other and communicating, as well as communicating across the state. So now, all of the districts in the state of Maryland are looking at how this legislation may affect them. And we're seeing some similarities between us and other districts, and then some differences with how that will impact. One of the biggest issues that we talked about last time this year was the restricted nature of the funding of Blueprint. And so I just want to go over that very quickly for those of you who may not have a kind of a basic understanding of that. So basically, we have, we get our funding now, and let's just say that it's in one big pot, and we take the funding from that pot and we pay for things like our teachers, health insurance, you know, heating and cooling, diesel for our buses. You know, everything that our organization needs to buy and pay for, we pay for out of that funding. The way Blueprint affects us is that it tells us, okay, all of that, all of that stuff that you're buying with that fund, you now need to take that money and pay for other things instead. And so we have to figure out how we're going to keep the organization running the way it is now and put extra money towards certain things, like schools that have more students who receive special education services, or the schools who have more economically disadvantaged students enrolled, or schools who have more students who receive ESOL services. So basically, it's great in that we are having the opportunity to put more funding towards students who need that extra funding. The problem is, this isn't, the law isn't coming with more money. It's coming by saying, you get this much money, this is your formula, and you have to spend what you get in this formula in new ways. And so that's really the part that is a big challenge for us, and it's a big challenge for most of the other districts as well. So the difference between this year and last year is that last year at this time, I was telling you that we were going to need to move staff from certain schools who don't have as many students who are economically disadvantaged or receive ESOL services, and give that, those staff members to schools that have a lot of those students in those buildings. We have received more flexibility on the timeline for that, so please hear me. We are not, we have not received flexibility in that we don't have to do that. What we've received is, instead of having to do that by August of 2024, we will have until August of 2025 to figure that out. So last year at this time, I was thinking that today, standing here, I was going to know who I was going to have to move from certain schools to other schools. And we were going to start that process of letting folks know who was going to have to move, and we were going to have to figure out how we were going to keep the schools running that we were taking staff from. Because of the flexibility that we've been given, we've got extra time to figure out what that's going to look like. Again, it doesn't mean that we don't have to do it. It just gives us an extra year to work toward what it will look like. So that's where we are today. I want to go over a little bit more about the fiscal compliance. So as I said, the state is not going to impose penalties this next school year for noncompliance because they're giving us an extra year. So basically, if we don't meet the goals of the Blueprint, the state can take, is it 20% or 25% of our, 25% of our funding? We can't operate with, if the state would withhold 25% of our funding. So we do have to comply, but we just have more time in which to do it. So we're not going to need to make those dramatic shifts in staffing for this coming year. We can stay the way we are. The reporting to the state is going to establish a baseline for compliance. So basically, what we've been turning into the state is how all of our schools look right now and what we're doing right now. We have to turn in multi-year plans to the state that shows them what we're going to do each year to be in compliance with the Blueprint. And our plan each year has to show that each year we're moving closer to meeting the goals of the Blueprint. And I'll talk about those goals in just a minute. So for our local implementation plan, the AIB, which is the Accountability and Implementation Board, which is the body that is over compliance for us, they have given us a more comprehensive planning document, which asks us for more details about how we will comply with this legislation. It looks back at our accomplishments that we've made, but it looks forward toward those multi-year goals. And the AIB and the Maryland State Department of Education get to approve these multi-year goals, and then they also get to tell us whether we've made them or not. And some of you may remember from last year that we have to shift into giving the state monthly financial reports that shows that the money for each child is going to the school that it is supposed to go to. And so that will show our compliance with the Blueprint. It also allows for a little bit more flexibility to measure success and set future initiatives or goals. So what we're now hearing, which is a, which is a good thing, is that we will be able to talk to them about what really are the needs of our system and what kinds of goals can we set for the future that will be specific for Carroll County Public Schools. We are continuing to build our understanding of the details of the Blueprint with the state and with the AIB, and all of our future state funding will be based on successful progress under the new Blueprint plan. One thing that the AIB has done is that they have heard all of the districts, I guess, cry for help, I'll call it that, in that, again, we've got this funding that we could spend on everything, and now it's very restricted, and we're trying to figure out, how do we still pay for everything we've paid for before, and funnel more funding to these special areas that we need to focus on? So they've heard us, and what they've done is provided each district with a facilitator that they are paying for. And this person is a consultant who comes in, ours is Dr. Frank Grossman, and he listens to what our challenges are with implementation of the Blueprint, and he helps us to see, okay, these are some ways that you may be able to overcome the obstacles or the challenges that you're facing. He's helping us develop our implementation plan, and he is engaging some stakeholder groups. He has already had some meetings with some students, some staff, and he will also be meeting with groups of parents as well. So this is a great addition to this process because he meets with the AIB directly, and then he meets with us. So he is able to go back to the AIB and talk about, talk about the challenges we're facing, as well as the progress that we're making. He's also able to get questions answered for us. So it's opened up a lot more dialogue, and it's helping to make things more clear for us, which is great. I want to talk to you now about some updates, some significant updates since last year with each of the pillars of the Blueprint. So pillar one of the Blueprint is early childhood. And what we've done already is we've expanded our pre-K, our full-day pre-K at all our existing pre-K sites. So that is already complete, and those, most of those classes are full, as you can imagine. Our CIP, or our Capital Improvement Plan, includes planning and requests to build additions at all elementary schools to achieve the public share of required pre-K slots for four-year-olds, and then we have to start looking at three-year-olds because that's something that the Blueprint asks us to do as well. So basically, what we've done is we've gone back and seen, okay, in all of our schools, this is the physical space we have for pre-Ks. What would we need in order to make sure that we have pre-K for all of the students who need it, first for four-year-olds and then someday for three-year-olds? And then finally, we talked about this a little bit last year too, but we don't have enough private pre-K providers to achieve the required private slots. So basically, what Blueprint says is, public schools, you provide this many slots, and then we're going to make sure that the private providers can provide slots as well to make sure that students who need pre-K can have pre-K. The problem is, for us, we don't have many pre-K providers in Carroll County to begin with, and those that we have haven't necessarily wanted to sign on to Blueprint. And there are many reasons for that, but one of the reasons is that there are certain, certain requirements that a pre-K, that a pre-K must, must show in order to take part in the Blueprint. And so for some business owners, some pre-K providers, for them, it doesn't help their business, or it doesn't help their business model, so they've said no to participation. So we continue to try to work with our pre-K partners to, to move that forward and to get more slots for our students. So that's where we are on pillar one. Pillar two focuses on highly, high-quality and diverse teachers and leaders. Again, this is the part that, that goes to improving the field of education so that more people will be interested in becoming teachers. So we are, the CCPS, Carroll County Public Schools, and CCEA, our Teachers Bargaining Unit, or our Teachers Union, we are finalizing the framework for the required career ladder. And what that means is, part of Blueprint is making sure that teachers can stay in the classroom and have a full career of advancement. So if you think about it, right now, most teachers, once they hit a certain place, end up moving outside of the classroom in order to advance professionally. Some become assistant principals and principals, others become content supervisors, et cetera. What the Blueprint wants to do is not stop people from doing that, but give people another avenue. If you're a teacher and you want to stay in the classroom and teach, you would be rewarded for that as well, and that there would be different steps on a career ladder for lifetime teachers. And so we are working hard with, with our Teachers Union on that career ladder and what that might look like for our teachers. Next, we are working together with the Teachers Union toward achieving the required $60,000 minimum teacher salary. We have to have the career ladder done for next school year, and we have to have the $60,000 minimum done by the latest fiscal year 2027. Now, if you think about it, when you're working on a career ladder, which talks about levels, it's also a good thing to talk about the salaries that will go with that. So that's what we're trying to do, and that's what most of the other districts are trying to do as well. Come up with a career ladder and put some real numbers to that so that everybody can see what that might look like in the future. Right now, we're also working with our Administrator's Bargaining Unit, that's, that's that weird thing there called EPSCO. That, that's really just our administrators and supervisors. Because as you can imagine, if you're, if you're taking a look at teacher salaries and developing a career ladder for them, you can't not think about administrators and supervisors and what, what their career path will look like as well. So we're starting to work on that. We're almost complete with the teachers portion. And finally, all of this work that we're doing is contingent upon funding, and that should actually say, yes, FY25. So basically, what that means is, we're working through the career ladders, we're working through the compensation for those career ladders, but nothing gets done until the budget gets funded by our commissioners. So that's the process that we're in right now. Okay. Pillar three, college and career ready. This is the pillar that aims to make sure that our students are ready for not only college, but for those who want to go directly into a career from high school. So the state board has adopted a new college and career-ready standard. It was, it was just adopted in January, and it considers multiple factors to say that a student is college and career-ready. So the first one is, student has to have a GPA of 3.0 or higher and a grade of C or higher in Algebra I, or proficient or above score on Algebra I MCAP, or, because this isn't complicated enough, proficient or above score on ELA-10 and Algebra I MCAP. So, phew, that's a mouthful, and that's a lot for, for our students to achieve, to be considered college and career-ready. One thing you may have noticed in what I just spoke of is that it doesn't address our kids who need to meet the CTE standard, or the Career and Technology Standard. Because as you can imagine, think about some of our, our students who are going to choose a path of Career and Tech Center, like plumbing, or, you know, any of the other, you know, mechanics, heavy machinery. Some of those may not meet the rigorous academic standards that are listed here. So that's what we're working with the state on right now. And, and this college and career-ready status affects our funding. So if you, so think about it this way, we get a certain amount of funding for every student who is considered college and career-ready. So every student who meets this standard, we will get a certain amount of funding for. Well, right now, we have lots of students who are not meeting that standard, but are doing very well in their career track at the Career and Tech Center. And if you can imagine, because of all of the things that we provide for students at the Career and Tech Center, all of the special instruction, machinery, everything that is required for there, it costs more for us to educate some of our students who go to Career and Tech, but we're not getting funding for them right now because many of them are not meeting this new standard. So that, there's a gap right there in our practical day-to-day operation and what the state is currently looking at or providing. So, so that's something that we're talking about. It's something that my hope is will be addressed in the very near future. And then we have pillar four. Pillar four, we've talked about a little bit already. This is called More Resources for All Students. This is the section where our funding has to be restricted to certain areas. So for compensatory education, another word for that is economically disadvantaged. We have to show that out of our total budget, our total operating budget, we're spending 38.9 million in that area. So basically, all that funding has to go to the schools where students, our students who are economically disadvantaged, attend. We have to show that we're spending 2.3 million for our English language learners, 1.3 million for pre-K, 740,000 for TSI, that's another, that's another subgroup of our students, and then Special Education, 25 million. Again, this is not additional money. This is money that we currently spend in other ways. So we're looking at, how can we continue to keep the lights on in our schools and put diesel in our buses and pay for employee healthcare and salaries and everything that we do as an organization while funneling this funding in these restricted areas? Our implementation planning has to include strategies that we're going to use to comply with this. And that's, again, why, why the, the AIB facilitator is being so helpful to us, because he's looking at these numbers and where we are and what we have to afford as a school system and how we might be able to, to move that funding around to meet the needs. And then, we also have the implementation of our first community schools. So the state designates certain schools as community schools, and these are schools who have at least 60% economically disadvantaged students. And at these schools, kids will be provided wraparound services. So the money for community schools will have to be used for things like, you know, a dentist who comes in before school or after school to provide dental services for students who need that, or medical services, or counseling services. And that's why it's called wraparound. It's not, it's not providing academic intervention for kids, it's providing all of those services that a student who comes from an economically disadvantaged home may not get the opportunity to participate in. Right now, we only have two schools who are considered community schools. The first is Crossroads Middle, and we think that they will only be considered a community school for this year and next year, because Crossroads is one of our special schools where kids come and go from it depending on their need. It's not, it's not really one of our comprehensive middle schools. But the one that does meet the requirement, and that we think will meet the 60% requirement for many years to come, is Tawnytown Elementary School. So we, so really, after next year, we will have, we will probably only have one community school, that will be Tawnytown, and we will spend the funding that we get for a community school to provide those wraparound services for the students who go to school there before and after school mainly. Okay. All right. So that is basically where we are at this time. And I know each of you probably came here for different reasons tonight, or you have a different interest in the Blueprint, or based on your experience, or where your child attends school. So I know that I probably didn't answer all of the questions in that presentation, which is why we have a question-answer session. This, this town hall is being recorded, and we will have it up on our website. We may also email it out to parents so that you can watch it again, or folks who couldn't be here tonight can watch it. But we also want to have a chance to answer any questions you may have. So we have a microphone in the back, in the middle, and I know it looks kind of scary, but it's not. But really, if any of you want to ask a question, if you could, go to the microphone because we want to be able to hear your question, and we want to be able to hear it on the, on the video as well, for other folks to benefit from. So anyone want to take the risk and go to the mic and ask any questions? Oh, we have, oh, we have volunteers. That's awesome. Thank you.
Will class sizes be impacted next year, 2024, 2025 school year in any way?
So, no, not because of Blueprint. So, you know, every year, we have things that happen with, with class sizes and staffing, but I would say, I don't think any school is going to see any kind of major shift next school year because we have that extra year to, to consider how we're going to move that staff around. And so what will happen is, I'll spend the remainder of this school year communicating to parents about what's going to happen next school year, and then next school year, we will plan for that shift, and we'll start to have meetings with staff and parents about what exactly that shift will look like. So, no, you shouldn't see any major differences between this year and next year for, for your child.
Hello. I have a question. I just saw what the governor did in January, cutting the community colleges' funding by 10%. So how is that going to trickle down? Because right now, does that mean we have to spend more for our students to do the dual enrollment that we're being strongly encouraged to do by the Blueprint? Because that's more money that's coming out of a budget that is already strapped. And how are we going to meet our budget if the commissioners don't come up with the more money so that you have it, I think you said fiscal year 2027, to compensate our teachers? Do we lose 25% of that funding going into that fiscal school year?
Great questions. Let me start with dual enrollment. Dual enrollment, some of you may have heard, is part of Blueprint. We've always done dual, well, we've done dual enrollment here for many years. The change under Blueprint is that for students who want to participate in dual enrollment, it's free. We pay, as a school system, 75% of the bill and the community college We pay, as a school system, seventy-five percent of the bill and the community college pays for twenty-five percent of the bill. And as you can imagine, that's creating extra, a need for us for extra funding to be able to afford that. Our bill for dual enrollment for this year was over one point five million dollars. And I, I believe that as more students find out and their parents find out that this is a possibility, it will, it, it could gain even more traction and, and be more popular for our students. And yes, right now, it looks like the community colleges could be cut. Their budget could be cut by the state. And if that happens, you know, one of the ways that community colleges make up for that cut in funding is that they increase tuition. And if they increase tuition, it, it, the logic of that is they're going to charge more in tuition, which means that our seventy-five percent that we pay for each course is going to cost us more. And so we could easily go from over one point five to definitely over two million very quickly. So that, our, our relationship with dual enrollment is complex at this point because we want our students to take advantage of dual enrollment. We think it's good for our kids. And at the same time, we want to be fiscally responsible about it. What was the second part? You can... So, you know, what are we going to do if the commissioners, you know, don't come through with funding the budget that we have requested? And I won't put Ted on the spot, who's here in the room tonight. What I would say to that is, you know, every year, we have to put a budget forward to our commissioners about what we need in order to run the school system. And the number that we put forth is never the bare minimum that we, you know, the, the least number and it's, but it's never the highest number. Like if, if we were to tell them, this is what we need, they would probably have, they would probably pass out. So we go into budget season knowing, you know, if, if we're asking for this, but we get a couple million dollars less, this is what we're going to have to cut in order to make it work. So, and that's that give and take between the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners. So I would just say to that, we have a great relationship with our commissioners. I think our commissioners want to support us. And I think they're going to do their best to, to fund us and give us what we need in order to run the school system. I think everybody knows that one of the main reasons people move to Carroll County is the great schools. And we want to be able to keep those up and keep, keep giving people, keep giving our students what they deserve. So, so we will have a Plan B. I'm not saying that the Plan B won't be ugly, but we will have to make sacrifices in order to make the Plan B work. Yeah.
Hi. Actually, my question is about the Plan B. Carroll County runs on a lean, mean budget. So what can we possibly cut? I know our schools, they run out of paper. I mean, very, very basic things that PTA's especially are being asked for to cover these budget items. Printers, computers. What can possibly be cut and still have a functioning school system?
We're looking at all of that. You know, one of the things that we're having the most robust conversation about is technology. And as you remember, during COVID, we had to provide one-to-one devices for every student because everybody had to, to participate in virtual learning. There were times when nobody was in school, or, you know, only half the students were in school at a, at any given time. Now, we, we are being forced to look at that and determine, you know, what is that going to look like? Is every student going to get one? Are we still going to provide that for pre-K through two? If we decide not to, how will that affect virtual snow days? Because right now, our calendar is such that we have a certain amount of regular snow days for kids. And then if we run out of those days, we've said that those days will be virtual learning days. Well, if we don't have computers for our youngest learners, will we be able to take advantage of that option? So there's a lot on the table right now. And it's just those kinds of things. What will we be able to give up and what will the consequences of that be? We haven't made any final decisions. But once we get the final budget from the commissioners, we will have to go back and make those decisions. Yeah. But there is no easy one, for sure. You're right.
When you say that, in one of the slides, you talk about how I think this year, for AIB's purposes, will be a baseline year, and I guess against which they'll measure compliance in future years. So when they say baseline, does that mean in a way that, you know, if CCPS is not spending the required seventy-five percent within a category, say it's fifty percent, so long as there's demonstrable progress each year towards seventy-five percent, that CCPS will sort of, will not be penalized by having their funding withheld? And in a way, it kind of buys some more time towards that full compliance? Is that right?
Yeah, sort of, yes. I, I think we have to show that over multiple years, this is how we're going to get there and this is how much we will do each year. Now, the AIB could come back to us and say, for this specific goal, you're not going to get four years. We're only going to give you two years. And then we'll have to go back to the drawing board and see, okay, how can we get to this in two years instead of four years? But yes, that's exactly what this is going to look like is, is we have to say, this is where we are today. Where, where do we need to be? How many years, within reason, do we think it's going to take to get there? And what will that look like along the way?
This is more just like a background information, I guess. So when they came up with the numbers that you showed on the last slide, were there like blanket numbers that, like percentages across all counties that this percentage of your budget? Or did they look at each county? Because counties have huge discrepancies between the numbers of students who receive free and reduced meals. And, and did they tweak the numbers based on, tweak the percentages based on how many students in that district would qualify? Or was it just, this is, this amount, that amount?
I'm going to have John O'Neill come up and, and answer that. He's our Chief of Operations.
It's a great question. It's, the entire state formula is driven on per pupil amounts. And so there's a, there's a base per pupil that's actually written into the law for all of the years of the Blueprint. And so we, we, like, one good thing about the Blueprint is we know what that base number is for ten years. Historically, we used to have to try to sort of guess, educated, an educated guess each year as to how much that might go up. All of the other special areas of students, special populations of students are a percentage of, of that base targeted per pupil. The amount for each special education student, for each compensatory ed student, for each ESOL student, those amounts are a percentage derived from that, from that targeted per pupil that's hardcoded. So it's the same for every county. It's just how many students do you have that fall into special ed? How many students do you have that fall into ESOL, et cetera? And then it can change year to year, and I do think they recognize that. And there's also some discussion that, you know, they, I don't want to get too detailed, but as they're on, they're, they're learning the Blueprint as they implement it as well. And so that, you know, some of these numbers could shift over time. They didn't have a blueprint for the Blueprint. So they could adjust. And I think, you know, that's the, the reasonableness or the flexibility that Dr. McCabe's talking about. I, I don't think you get penalized ultimately if you're within, within a reasonable target or have a plan to get there.
I, I have a similar question, kind of background and also looking forward. Reason I came here tonight was my biggest concern is the class sizes. I have young students at Mays and Pars. They have wonderful teachers. They already have, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six kids in their class. And it's my understanding, talking to other parents who came to these discussions last year and were expecting implementation this year, that teachers from our schools would have to transfer to ones that had the greater free and reduced meals. So can you explain, you know, how I could see a change in my schools and the rationale behind the free and reduced meals kind of target for teachers?
Yes, I'll start and then I'll have Mr. O'Neill come up. So basically, what you're talking about is the compensatory education restricted funding that is in this packet. It's about thirty-seven million. And so what that means is that seventy-five percent of that money has to follow the child to their school. And so if you have a school that has a lot of kids who are economically disadvantaged, they're going to get more of that thirty-seven million than a school that doesn't have that many students who are economically disadvantaged. So what we're going to be left with is a, is basically a formula for each school based on the students who are in that school and basically which buckets they fall into for funding. And so if, if there's a certain amount of money that we're going to be able to spend on Mount Airy Elementary and a certain amount of money that we're going to need to spend on Robert Moten Elementary, I'm going to have to take some of the money from Mount Airy to give to Robert Moten. And because we're an organization that is eighty-five percent employees, staff, that's what we spend eighty-five percent of our funding on, the only thing I can take is people, staff, from, you know, let's just say, Mount Airy, to give to, let's just say, Robert Moten. Mr. O'Neill, can you say that any more succinctly?
Is, is that something you're going back to the review board on? Because, I mean, I'm not a career educator, but I don't see the correlation between a class size and just, you know, the economic status. I could understand if it's test scores, English second language, special ed. I just don't understand that correlation.
You know, that's, I guess that's sort of theory and philosophy that, that underlines or underpins the Blueprint. I, I do think that that, you know, the difference between new money not yet spent and money already being spent is sort of the crux of what has led to this statewide conversation that, that sort of Dr. McCabe was on the forefront of last spring. And why I think state officials are saying, look, you're going to have some flexibility. I think, you know, I'm not, it's dangerous to speak for anybody and I certainly don't want to speak for policy leaders at the state level. But I think there's this realization that the Blueprint isn't intended by anyone, those who are strong advocates or those who have questions, to kind of make you reshuffle your entire school system in one moment. That was the concern last year and, and everyone seems to be saying, look, there's going to be time. But philosophically, what, what they are saying is certain schools, based on who those students are, data, experience, research, whatever, shows that they require more resources. And we've been a school system that has resourced our schools more equally. And I think there's a lot of reasons for that. You know, fifteen years of budgetary cuts, including school closures, we, we were trying to sort of evenly deal with that pain across the system. I think that's an example of what puts us a little, you know, gives us a little more of a compliance gap in one area comp ed than, than maybe another school system does. But at the same time, I, I think Dr. McCabe or Mr. Shockney, my counterpart in, in Instruction, would say, if this were only a conversation about new money, we'd be happy to spend it that way. In fact, we have been spending it that way in the last two fiscal years. New money, money that's not already being spent somewhere else, so you have to move something or cut something. But new money to help those, those populations of students that the Blueprint says we should, we, we are doing that and we're happy to do that. And we would love to replicate those services in other schools for, for students in those same categories. But it's how do you, how do you do it over time? You know, is it, is it three years? Is it five years? What do you, how do you balance all of these things? New money, old money, staffing resources? That's what we have to figure out as, as the superintendent and as the community as we go forward through this planning process year by year. I don't think that was a better answer either.
And it's that, the fact that this is not new money that I would like to, to ask about. So the school system in and of itself has no way to generate its own income. We can't hold a bake sale or hold a fundraiser or take out a Super Bowl ad or anything else to bring income and revenue to our children. Our children. And so what can we do to advocate that every child sitting in that classroom, where last year you spoke about taking measuring tapes and measuring square footage to see if we took all the furniture out and just put children in, how many we could fit? These are our children. How, and it's, it's a huge misconception to say that there are children, that there are no children in those schools affected who don't struggle, who don't struggle to learn to read, who don't have food insecurity, whose parents don't know that they can submit for farms or that they would even qualify. How do we advocate for those kids who can't help themselves? How do we advocate for our children?
That's a great question because you're right. We, you know, we can wish that there was more funding to go around for every child, but we have what we have from the state and then from, from the locals, from our commissioners. So I would say that the only thing that we can do, or that you can do as parents, is, is you can communicate with our commissioners and you can communicate with those, with our, our delegates at the state level about the funding. That's really the only thing, because we can't generate our own funding, that we can do is ask for help in what the state gives us and what the, our locals fund us with. Great question. Thank you.
In an ideal world, if we're funded fully for the Blueprint and we can move forward with this, that still is not answering the question that I think a lot of us have concerns about. I'm fortunate, I have a junior right now. But if I had someone in elementary or middle school, as a parent who's been through those years, those are fun behavior years. So if you are now moving teachers from one school to another to accommodate the Blueprint, and some of us understand, some of us even get it, some of us are questioning the logic of the Blueprint, but put that aside. That one teacher who I know at Carroll Town, when my kids were there, we had thirty-two kids per team of four teachers. You take one teacher out, I'm not doing that new math that you're teaching in the schools because as my kid knows, it's way above me, we pay a tutor. But now you have thirty-two kids roughly to split between three teachers who already have thirty-two kids. And that's where the tape measure and fitting kids and fire codes comes into play, but also behavior issues. I mean, there's only so much one teacher can handle and she's not getting an extra resource because you've given her more kids. At least that's not how I understood it. How is all that going to be managed? Because that's going to be the problem when you have principals that can't deal with all the disciplinary issues that are happening at one time and guidance counselors, there's only so many in each school. What happens then?
Well, that's one of the challenges that, that we think about, talk about and strategize about every day. What will that look like in the schools that we, that we do need to pull resources from? And how can we support those schools? It's also something, because you're right, come, you know, coming back from COVID, our students have shown that they, in the years since then, they're coming to school with, with more complex social, emotional needs and mental health needs. And sometimes what that shows in behavior issues or challenges from our students. And so one of the, that's one of the issues that we're talking with our facilitator about, Dr. Grossman. And he is helping to bridge that gap between us and the AIB and looking at what, what can we do to fulfill the thirty-seven million in compensatory ed without leaving some schools with class sizes that are way too high in order... with class sizes that are way too high, um, in order to be able, for our teachers to teach effectively. And if our goal is to make teaching a profession that people want to go back into, the last thing we want to do is create a situation where teachers have, have unmanageable class sizes.
That's going to eventually affect our property values because no one's going to want to come here and then we're all in trouble.
Yes, it affects everything. It affects, it affects student achievement as well. Thank you.
So property values is actually something that I wanted to mention. A lot of people are moving here from Howard County. Um, we're seeing an increase in income and an increase in value here. So we're going to have more tax money. What does that look like when you're thinking about the budget moving forward?
Well, as you know, I can't make the decision to, um, raise taxes or, or look at the tax money that's coming in and, and determine how much the school system gets. You know, that, uh, that would be dangerous if I had that, uh, that, that say. But, um, in all seriousness, you know, that's, that's the issue that our commissioners are really looking at at this point. What to do, um, what to do in order to fund us? As well as, you know, remember we have a new EMT and FIRE, um, uh, service now that we never had in the past because it was always volunteer. Now the county is, um, having to figure out how they're going to pay for a paid service. Along with all, paying for all of the blueprint, um, initiatives that have to be met legally. So they are not in a good place. Are they Ted? No, Ted, Ted is shaking his head. They're not in a good place. And ultimately I don't know what their decisions are going to be. But like I said before, you know, the best thing you can do as a citizen is just let, let the commissioners know how you feel and what your concerns are about the funding. And, um, you know, I'm not saying to barrage them because like I said, we work well with them. Um, and I think they do want to do the right thing for us. But I always think it's good for citizens to, um, participate and let it be known what your priorities are.
So if we don't change the taxes at all though, have you looked at the projected budget? If it stays the same, we get a certain percentage for schools. Is the blueprint feasible? There's like a lot of fear in the room right now, but we are seeing increased income coming in.
So, so no, the answer to your question is no. Like, like we're asking for eleven million dollars more for, for this coming school year than what the commissioners had budgeted for us. And that's a lot. And that's not even enough to fully fund what we need to do. That's to get us somewhere in the ballpark of being able to show that we're trying, that we're, that we're making some progress toward where we need to be.
And then pure, uh, per pupil, how much does Carroll County spend on our students?
I don't know that I can answer it with a specific per pupil number standing here right now. But it's worth noting that, uh, so hmm, how do I do this quickly and in public? So funding's wealth equalized. So, you know, there's target, the targeted per pupil I referred to earlier with, with an earlier question, that's, that's the state target. And then that amount, um, is wealth equalized. So the state takes the twenty-four jurisdictions, the twenty-three counties in the city and ranks them by relative wealth. And then proportionately, the state pays less of a share to wealthy counties and more of a share to less wealthy counties. We usually fall about ninth or 10th in the state and, and relative wealth ranking. And this is very loose, but that just as kind of a very loose way of thinking about it that typically would work out to a sixty, forty split in many cases between, um, forty percent state level of funding, sixty percent of, um, of local funding. Our commissioners are, um, it have been at least consistently for a while, funding us above the level they're required to in, in the law, in the education law. And funding us, well, so there's two ways now under the blueprint that local governments, in our case, the commissioners are, are, are measured as to how they fund us. One, the historic way is maintenance of effort, um, a, a minimum amount that they're required to fund in most years, in recent years, except for like the first pandemic year when we were all sort of unsure where, where things were headed. Our commissioners have been funding us above maintenance of effort. And I think that's what Dr. McCabe's referring to. There's a positive relationship here. Our commissioners are also funding us well above, um, what's, uh, under the blueprint referred to as the local share. There's kind of like a separate formula. There's maintenance of effort and then there's what is your share? So they're not legally underfunding us. We're, we're asking them to do more. And we're saying that as a, um, a county that ranks fairly high in relative wealth, we, we have, we're not going to get it. We know how much state money we're going to get. Actually, we have a better understanding of how much state money we're going to get into the future than we've ever had. For all of this to go, we're, we're looking at you and they're having to figure that out, balance the other priorities countywide. They don't have an easy job either. There's, there's a lot to talk about throughout the spring here.
Yeah. So as Mr. O'Neill said, you know, the, the state gives us a certain portion and then they look to the, the counties to fund the rest based on our relative wealth. And where the disconnect is for us is even though the county is funding us more than they have to, it's not enough to fund the blueprint. So that's, that's where that gap is. Yes.
Hi, um, I'm a teacher in the county and I had a question about, um, the schools that are expected to be relocating staff from one school to another. What schools are expected to lose staff? How many staff? I also have small children in school. So how are you going to decide what staff to move from point A to point B? Cause I live in Sykesville, but I teach in Mount Airy. So I would have a child going to school in Sykesville, a son in daycare in Mount Airy and I could be shipped to Tawnytown, which would be pretty crazy. So are you at all worried at also about losing staff who are forced to move from location A to B?
Absolutely. We are very worried about, um, when we actually have to start looking at staff shifts, that we keep the staff we have. A, as, as we've said, we, we are in a teacher shortage. We can't afford to lose anybody that we have. And so, um, we know that that will be difficult for the staff who, who we need to move, uh, somewhere else. Certainly we're going to, um, work with staff to make sure that that, that that process is smooth and, um, that we, that we do our best to meet the needs of our staff. The last, uh, presentation that we did last year, um, had a chart on it.
Yeah, I remember seeing that. I didn't know if the numbers were the same or if they had changed. Cause I know some of that was based off of funding from, that we were getting from the county. So I didn't know if those numbers were.
Yeah. So we don't have any updated numbers for that and that was just kind of an example. We don't have any updated numbers from that chart that you, that, uh, we presented last year. But as we move toward having to make those shifts, we will update and that's something that will happen during next school year. So yeah, we don't have more information on that tonight other than to say we'll still have to do something like that. Uh, we don't know how many people it will impact, but we're going to do our, our best to do, to be the best district in the state as far as, um, including our staff in the process. Because every, every district will have to do something like we have to do. But we're going to do our best to make sure that it's, um, it's, it's done in a fair way and in a way that includes staff in the process. And I'm sorry, I don't have any, uh, any more specific information for you at this point. Any other questions? All right. Um, again, thank you so much for coming out. I really appreciate it. Like I said, please, uh, spread the word, uh, to your neighbors, your friends, other folks that, um, that you can get this word out to so that no one is surprised by, by the, the actions and the impact that will start to occur next school year. We're trying to keep the lines of communication open. So thanks again for coming out. Have a great night.